And the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna have one gender adjustment. We're gonna move the Emerson family donation from number nine up until right after staff number of the month. And this meeting is being videotaped. I always forget that. They have a motion on the minutes.
Motion?
Second handover.
Second.
Second on Whitman. Any discussion on the minutes for September 20th, October 10th? Seeing none, all in favor? Still not the month.
Gentlemen, I wanted to take a minute to proudly announce that Amanda Crowley is our student of the month for the month of October. Her nomination was sent by a beautiful letter from the Bay Path Rehab and Nursing Center and was sent directly to our chairman, Mr. Mola. I want to highlight a couple of phrases from that letter and then talk a little bit about what the staff said about her. And it was not just a little bit. So there were many, many kind words about Amanda. They came from veteran staff members right down to our very newest staff member in her program. So kind words all around. And so what the Bay Path had to say, and these are vocabulary words that are important to me in my world as an educator, and they were words like positive, timely, and a great role model for her coworkers. Phrases like effectively manages her time and is a great support and reassurance to her patients. And the fact that she is paving the way to welcome additional students from South Shore into Bay Path from our allied health programs. So these are really fine words for Amanda. In addition, we really had to narrow down the things that her teachers had to say about that, say about her. And what they said is that Amanda is a senior in allied health who lives in Whitman, a licensed CNA, a member of the cheerleading lacrosse teams, and is the senior class vice president. From our staff, we hear that Amanda is incredibly warm, welcoming, and helpful. In combination, she is confident, motivated, eager to learn, and a strong advocate for herself. She brings you high-level tools and characters to Bay Path Rehab and Duck Spray where she's currently working as a CNA. According to her allied health instructors, we have seen her on clinic and clinical, Amanda is the kind of certified nursing assistant that any one of us would want, caring for a member of our family. Next year, Amanda plans to attend college to study nursing. So please, Amanda, congratulations. I think Mr. Mola may want to say a couple of words.
Yes, my wife would like to say a few words to you, Amanda, as well.
How do you guys all look this way right now? Okay. I was the first Maris at Social Vocational School many years ago. And to meet Amanda while I was a patient at Bay Path and she was in helping me through many things that I needed. And all I could see was that face that was just the biggest smile. And she just seemed like she really enjoyed every minute that she was there. And the first thing that went to me is that I said, she's gonna make a terrific RN. And I think that she is going to be top. And there's so many different areas in nursing that you can go today, that she has many, many choices. And based on how she takes care of herself and the patients and the things that she has to do, she's gonna be top-notch. And I think we should say to Mr. and Mrs. Crowley, what a wonderful job you have done with Amanda because I know it needs a little push to get a lot of things done. But I had, after having back surgeries, I had three of them, I was sent to Bay Path Rehabilitation in Duck Spray. I first saw Amanda when she came into the room. She was a young lady with a big smile and a room asking if I had, if I was comfortable and did I need anything. Almost every day, Amanda stopped by the room and asked if I needed anything. Each day when I saw her, she still had that big smile. One afternoon, she came to help the other patient and we had a nice conversation generally about her schooling and where she was getting her education. She has clinical area, was directed to being a registered nurse. Presently, she is in CSCNA, which is a certified nursing assistant. When she told me she was a student at South Shore Votech, I had all I could do to keep from jumping out of bed because I thought that was so wonderful. She's a warm, motivated, and confident caring for her patients. Thank you for all you did for me as a patient. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. You worked great down there. You always had that smile. And you volunteered to help everybody. You were there before they could bring the button. You used some dirty work, but you took perfect care of my wife. And I remember when she was under us, it was very good. This is a copy of the letter that Bay Path sent to me for you. So you have that one. And Ms. Baldwin is gonna put the original in your file for you. But thank you again for everything.
Thank you so much.
And you're proud of the school. You've shown it. And you're proud of everything we had. Y'all went and baked some South Shore Votech, the greatest school we've gone to.
Thank you.
I heard that.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Crowley. The school committee, thank you for having a great student of the month. Staff member of the month, Brian Chamberlain.
I don't like just appearing. I think it's great if I can patch it up. It's a rarity when I actually have to look up. This is kind of nice, actually. Look up for our staff members. So we're here to congratulate Brian Chamberlain for being chosen staff person of the month for October 2017. He, Brian is a consummate classroom teacher. He's prepared every day in every way. He actually gets here before me. And those of you who know what time I get here, he's here before me in the morning. Okay?
So you might as well not go home. That's what I caught down there.
He understands how to connect with his students on a number of levels in and out of the classroom. Mr. Chamberlain and another one of our teachers, Mr. Bova, have become a great co-teaching model, giving our students a great one-two punch of knowledge and skills in their classroom. When the students speak of Mr. Chamberlain, they say, he makes learning so easy and he pushes me when I need it. He is always working to make kids happy in the classroom and helps them when they need it. He takes his job very seriously and still manages to make learning fun, cracking a few jokes and making our work as current as possible. He is a great teacher. Once again, on behalf of the students of South Shore Vocational Technical High School, we congratulate Mr. Brian Chamberlain on his hard work and his dedication to the South Shore community. I do have to comment, just on Tuesday, when the staff meeting, the staff also voted Brian as the staff member of the month on Tuesday. So he gets it from the students and the staff. A nice double bill. Thank you, Brian.
And now, we have a little, thank you. We have in that audience today, Mr. Herb Emerson, of the Emerson Family Trust, is how it is called, Emerson Foundation.
You're the one who's presenting.
And he has made a very substantial donation to the students here at South Shore. The family foundation donated $50,000. And we want to personally thank Herb and the sidekick, Dr. Rico, who introduced us to him originally. And we have a little, other than the thank you, we have a little something for you, Herb. On our first meeting, you asked us some questions. And you wanted to know if we had anybody that could seek private money and you mentioned we should have an ambassador. Well, there's many things that we can't have an ambassador on public things. In honor of your donation, we are providing you with a South Shore Votech vocational golf shirt with your ambassador on it. And also, you have an ID badge to come to this school anytime and you'll be entrusted as Mr. Ambassador.
Oh, that's terrific. For someone that can't cut a board straight, I'd be selling my wares on this.
You've done well for this school and anybody in history.
Well, we just started. We just started.
Okay, we thank you, sir.
My pal.
Go ahead, say a few words.
If you roll this out, you...
No, no, no.
I'm warm.
Just want to forget it.
Tom sent me a little note suggesting that I give you a little bit of my background, and I'm happy to do that. But also, before I do that, I should congratulate all of you for the wonderful school you have. And I don't talk for a minute that solid and well-understood was. And we'd like to see you even bigger and better. I think we're on to something a little bit. I've been in the nonprofit world for 30 years, after I earned enough to be in the nonprofit world. And it's been a great experience for me and I've enjoyed almost every moment. And when you say that, I'm very pleased. So I congratulate all of you for all of the things you've done here. I've had a tour of the plant and I'm really impressed. Tom mentioned background. I don't know exactly where to start. When you're 89 years old, if someone had background, you know I could be here for a month, but that'll be here. I would start probably after I finished, I helped grow three businesses. I didn't grow them myself. There was an organization and the governance. One was Platoon, one was State Street Bank, and the last one was Where We Own, Reedby and my partner. We bought an investment company called the Longview Group. And we bought it. It was in operating in the red. It was about 1968, sorry, 82. And September, when did that happen? That's not even my age. Anyway, and so the lower, the lower the most companies and businesses was put to me and my partner. Unfortunately, he has bad Alzheimer's, which is pretty prevalent. And he almost slept with me the other day. I had lunch with him once a month. He probably didn't know it, didn't know it. Anyway, it was a wonderful experience and I had done some volunteer work for the hospital and they asked if I would chair the foundation for the South Shore Hospital. And I interviewed nurses and doctors to make sure I knew a little bit about what I was getting into. And so I decided to do it and it was a wonderful experience. And our first campaign was for 2.3 million dollars and knowing that we would never make it. I had a co-chairman, his name was Jim Dolph, and he was a retired orthopedic surgeon. And he and I were out every single night of the week selling the hospital. And we raised 2.5 million. Now, you might think that's a lot, you might think that's a little bit. But their last campaign, and there have been several since we did that first one, they're raising one now for the ICU, which is intensive care unit, for 70 million dollars. So they've come a long way. And once you get the ball rolling, and hopefully if there's a ball here, we can get rolling here, people see, they become more aware of what you're doing and what you bring to the community. And I expect we'll do very well. Now, I'm trying to stay with what the outline you gave me. You said...
Feel free to drift her. That's perfectly right.
Oh, you don't want to say that to me?
No, that's okay.
You then, you said, I'm thinking, we're in a half here.
You were talking...
Been married 67 years, so that tells you a lot.
God bless.
Yeah, that's a long time.
Herb, can you talk about your interest in the trades? That was, you made that very...
That's a short story, but I'd like to talk about that. My interest really came from, my two boys both went into trades and both were entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs with building and stuff down in Florida. And so, but the real motivation for me was the fact that I couldn't saw a board straight. And so when I saw other people that could, I was admire it. And I tried, but it wasn't like a cup of tea. And the other thing was that I was invited to a meeting at Thayer Academy. You all know that, where that is. And they were trying to get me to make a gift for them, for their school. And during the discussion, someone said, well, we all know the South Shore is a cultural wasteland. And that really troubled me. It stuck with me and it really bothered me that some people saw us as being a cultural wasteland. Now, I knew we were behind some of the city, you know, the city up north, but I didn't think we were a cultural wasteland. So that motivated me even more, one, not to give them money. And the other was, see what I could do. And having raised a fair amount of money and getting exposed to what raising money really means, when with that first time with the hospital, I was taken for a ride. I really thought it was a wonderful experience. And people in the community agreed, we're not a cultural wasteland. We also, we're very successful building the South Shore Y, which has, is just having 125th anniversary in Quincy for the new building they have there and the whole Y. And they've done extremely well. They kind of stay in step with the hospital and raising money, but they're almost there doing a good job. But there were so many that we work with. My good friend and driver, Mark, he's doing these things for the community all the time, but there's no signature with it. He just does it out of pureness of his heart. You rarely get that. As a matter of fact, our name is on a couple of buildings around him. My wife Polly hates it. She doesn't want our name on any building. Now, I'm aware, not because she isn't proud of what we've done, it's just that, you know, there's a place in the Bible that says, you know, do it without fanfare. They use different language. But nevertheless, the people who receive the gift, they play on it, you know? They say, oh, you know, would you use your name to raise more money? And you want to figure out, say, well, all right. And so that's how our name's gotten out a little bit. But I'm proud where it is and the organization's all doing well. I'm just trying to think of what the final thing is. I had another fellow that was gonna be here today, Joseph Sala of the Sala Foundation. You may have heard the name. It was a family in Canton that did a lot of engineering work on mammoth projects like the Mystic River Bridge, things like that. Well, they started in a foundation and they have given the rights to give money away. Well, one died and the other is still alive, he's 93. But it's interesting how people are, 93. He was washing the bottom of his boat today, 93 years old, not today.
Good for him.
Yeah. And so he does want to come back and he's interested just because he's a engineer, because he's interested in the trades. And I didn't really answer your question on the trades, but my two sons, follow up on that issue. Are doing very well and I'm proud of them. And back some years ago, there was a book written called The Sheik's Inside Cosis. And it was, it began to foresee the difficulties of everybody thinking everyone must go to college. And you're seeing it now because that effort back then, which has momentum now, is degrading your college. The undergraduate degree, the BA, isn't RAB, whatever you want, is not worth anything. It's not worth any more than a high school education. And so that, I guess what I'm leading to is the importance of the trades has never diminished since the day this country was discovered. I mean, you stop and think about it, it was need for carpenters, plumbers, everything, all the way along the line. And all the other good things that you do. And so Polly and I had talked about, we've helped lots of people out in the hospital Y in the past 30 years. And women had a cropper yet, they all seem to do quite well. We work with, I've worked with two dozen nonprofits and I feel good about it. Now, I know, we not only gave, but in my business experience, I gained a reputation for being a fair businessman. So some of them, we go in and we, it's me, we go in and help them with the systems and things like that, and that's worked out and they appreciate that. Like I just finished a paper for the conservatory and they want to change their image. I spent three weeks writing a paper on that. There doesn't seem to be much traction going on. I respect that. Anyway, I had to go out and tell you all kinds of crazy stories and good stories. I'm very happy with what I've been doing. I would do it again in what they say, in a New York minute. Maybe not another 50,000 tomorrow, but you know, pretty soon probably. But the big thing is I'm pleased to be associated with this organization and doing what we have talked about for a long while. And I know Mark, he's a good pace setter, so if I stay up to him, you'll see a lot of good fireworks. And I'd like to see this, you have a big waiting list. I'd like to see that waiting list of very small. And if we can build this so you could accommodate more, I would say great. And I think it's a wonderful organization that you have with the different towns. I mean, that really makes it terrific. And so that's my, that's the encapsulation of my background. I have no shady background, but I've got quite a broad background, but that's all you're gonna get tonight.
Don't forget your jacket, Herb.
No.
Last time you couldn't find your wallet.
That's what it is when you're 89 years old. The only thing I know, we've only learned my wallet. My eyeglasses are gone all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ambassador. Thank you for, thank you to South Shore Votech. We're gonna be great. We are great and we intend to stay great. Thank you very much for y'all part of it. Looking forward, anytime you want to stop by, we are for you.
Well, I'm gonna wear my jacket and make sure everyone sees my role, ambassador.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a comment. As Herb said and as Bob presented at the beginning, we do need people to be ambassadors and we also see the Emerson family donation as a way of reminding all of our industry partners, all of the employers in this region who are very eager to hire our skilled graduates, that we need to deepen and strengthen our industry partnerships. So I really do believe this donation is gonna be a catalyst to further partnerships. But we're very, very honored to have you as an ally in this and look forward to more conversations and more brainstorming going forward. So I personally say thank you, Herb, for all that you've done so far already.
Thanks.
You don't have to stand, you all, if you don't want to.
I still want to get together with you so we can talk about some projects, yeah?
You'll have, either you contact Tom or I'll have Tom.
Yeah, I'll come back up and see you, Tom.
Set up what you want to do.
Absolutely, because there's a number of areas we could... Why, you don't have the time to? I ain't have this time.
Yes, I'd like to now take a motion from the school committee to take accepting donations. Rockland, second by handover. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Anytime you need a board cut, you give us a call.
Or if you need one of the planes, Mike donated us a plane up last year. We have one of those too.
We'll make it happen.
You can go back to work now?
Yeah.
Well, thanks for listening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, I'll see you soon.
Good, very good.
Good job.
Anytime.
Anybody from the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one. Student Advisory Council, Rosa Gashka.
Good evening. Just a couple points for me, I don't have much. Haunted Hollow reminded that on October 28th, which is two Saturdays from now, the clubs will be coming again together to provide fun crafts and game activities for young members, four to eight years old, for our communities and their parents to come and have some fun at SSPT. Skills USA will also be doing a savers drive that day. We encourage the school committee and members of the communities to bring in clothes, furniture, old toys, books, and to the school to help the Skills USA events. The months of October and November, juniors and seniors will be setting fundraising calendars. For the month of December, all funds will be used to pay for student activities. The sophomore class will be selling coupon books, October through December. Both the coupon books and the fundraising calendars will be available at a booth during the October 21st Craft Fair, which is this coming Saturday. Student council will continue our tradition of selling spirit shirts to the various classes. Students who wear these shirts will be able to get into SSPT home games for free. Our goal is to increase SSPT visibility and promote student participation at all our sporting events. Todd and Pop dates have been tactically set. The big game will be on November 14th. We encourage the school committee members to join us. On September 28th, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony and welcomed into NHS the following members, Cody Campbell from Rockland, Benjamin Duquette from Abington, A-L... Ayla Herbert from Whitman, Elizabeth Hennessy from Rockland, Sierra Wil from Whitman, Muske Merchant from Situate, Allison Warren from Abington, Nicole Perry from Rockland, Elizabeth Ritter from Abington, Emol Silva from Rockland, and Brandon Keating from Abington. Lastly, on November nineteenth, Skills USA, SSBT charter has sponsored a club trip to help remove and store the flags at the graves of the fallen at the Warren National Cemetery. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
If I have a best DNA.
Just to try here, one time.
Thank you for some love. On the cover this month, there's a little bit of a fall sports fever that's going on here. I believe I stepped into the girls' volleyball game yesterday, and I guess it swept, first one more game, so I guess it's quite qualified for the trend of something like that, throwing their legs, so they're doing well. On your report for September thirtieth, cash balances at this point in the year is a little more than three point five million dollars. Again, healthy with all of our savings accounts and checking accounts, and so, on page two, again, the summary of our revenue, not much going on in September. We received a handful of numbers from the state, chapter seventy-eight, and everything else is fine, so we'll start billing for our, the second installment of our town is coming up shortly. And we'll also start billing, once the enrollment is solidified based upon the October first numbers, will also begin on November first, we start billing out of district towns as well, for the students that are enrolled here at South Shore Votech. And the final page is the expenses. Again, September's a busy month for supplies and equipment, as the teachers are getting settled in and ordering what they need for the students for the next few months. A lot of repairs are being done from a follow-up of the summer projects and so forth. There are really no major flags or issues that come across before the month, and things are looking great. So overall, we're very strong financially as we head into October.
And a motion, Situate, second, second, any discussion? All in favor? And budget transfers?
There are no budget transfers, everything is in line for this one, so nothing's required.
Anything else, Jim?
Note, again, just as a beginning of the drop, with all the new enrollments as we went over last month, the new employees for the district, Pat's done a great job of getting everybody set up, making sure that they got paid for their September cycle. And still here, it's the second cycle of the starting of the school year, so she's doing the homework with the bulk purchasing and purchase orders, and chasing everybody down for the proper signatures and everything, as well as helping with all the bidding process. As I know that there was a capital project, maybe last night, she did a lot of the legwork on the bidding process for that, so both related to the business office and building fine job.
Thank you, Jim. Chairman, the subcommittees, and the first one the chairman has is homework. You'll all be getting this package in the mail on the regional agreement, please study it, we're going to vote on it next month, so we can get it out to our community.
It's not currently in their hands right now, it will come to you.
Do you have any comments? Please follow up to Tom as soon as you get your, and then look at it, because we have a shot there. Thank you on that. Subcommittees, we had capital projects last night, we did come to contractual agreement with a firm to give us a facilities project update, and I'll let Tom speak on that a little bit right now.
So we had six firms respond to our request for qualifications, and we, the subcommittee met a week ago, a week ago, yesterday, and narrowed it down to three finalists. Last night, the subcommittee, which includes Bob Mahoney, Jack Manning, Bob Mola, our facilities director, Bob Moorhead, and myself, we conducted three interviews. They were very informative interviews, and the committee, the task that the subcommittee had was to prioritize the firms. So we have a, this has moved very quickly. Last night, there was a top ranking to an engineering firm called Nate Drummy, Rosane Anderson, out of Walthing, and they were contacted by me today, and we have worked out terms for a contract for them to come on board, and I will be sending them a finalized contract tomorrow. And for the members of the subcommittee, they have already confirmed that they are available next Tuesday night, October twenty-fourth at six PM, for what will be an initial meeting to start to get into the discussions. For other members of the committee not on the subcommittee, just to frame it in, this is a four-month project where this firm is tasked with coming in and essentially doing a full physical on our building, a complete facilities audit. Everything that they find will be brought back to the subcommittee, and they will be working with us on ways to prioritize and build a ten-year capital plan, looking at some of the big-ticket items. They will help us decide how to prioritize items, and for me personally, it's very important on the timing that if there's anything impactful for fiscal nineteen, I'd like to know about it by December. I will feel very confident they're going to meet these timelines. But in addition to taking a look at the existing plant, and making sure we maintain the assets that we are so, we so painstakingly maintain, a portion of this project is also to help us vision for the future. And all of the conversations we've had, and what you heard from Mr. Emerson earlier, when you talk about modernizing, growing, expanding, this firm is going to help take some of these ideas and bring them to life. They are not designing anything, but they are going to begin to give us ideas. What the subcommittee will be tasked with doing over the course of the next four months is taking some of the, that project makes a lot of sense. So if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'll just transition, let me transition to one other thing, and then on to new business, if I could get a vote recorded for the other project. I did want to mention, for the full committee, in your correspondence file, it's not, there was no action tonight, but you will find something I referenced at our last month's meeting. It's a series of policies, you might recall me saying that the MAS C had recommended that school committees take a look at updating various policies, and that we were going to start with the lowest hanging fruit, those policies that have minor ornamental changes. So I asked Holly Ditchfield to pull together those policies. I indicated last month, this was not, this did not require us to convene the policy subcommittee. So I'm bringing it to your attention, and I'll be asking that we put it on an agenda for November and December, and, you know, by December, we can begin the process of looking at policies that require a little more discussion. So it's there to save a stamp in your correspondence file tonight, and we'll take a look at it over the next couple of months.
And that was going to be digital instead of ten tons of paper?
Yes, our entire policy manual is actually on our website, so we will give you, we will always give you paper copies, because we know that the policy manual occupies a, you know, three and a half inch space on your shelves, we know how important that is. But it's all, we also update it on the website, so it's available to everybody. Mr. Chairman, if I may, on to new business, I would ask for a vote regarding that off-campus project that Mark described regarding the tennis courts.
So who, who, who?
Situate.
Seconded by Hanover. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Inadmissible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A field trip.
We need the votes and whether they answered it, those are those, we just do...
We just did that, so we need a field trip. Field trip. Sure, Mr. Chairman, under item nine C, if I could get a vote to approve a out-of-state field trip for crumbology. This, I believe this was the field trip that never was from last year and a storm, so I'm thrilled for the kids that returned this year, that this will give them an opportunity to go to New York.
Make the motion that we...
Hanson, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Surplus Tech, Tech Relics.
Make the motion.
I make the motion, we accept all the circles posted.
Situate, seconded by Whitman. Any discussion on any one? I'll make the comment from Mr. Mahoney.
Very good. By the way, Tom Rockland was very grateful, and yes, the school was accepting the old gas station sign up front. We were glad to give it to them.
Yeah, that's classic.
Okay, Moore's made second, no more discussion, all in favor? Yes. Lawrence.
Lawrence for approval, Lawrence number six, seven, and seven point one, totaling one million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, thirty-one cents.
Second. Seconded by whom?
Whitman.
Whitman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Inadmissible. Request for action?
Yeah, just put me on the agenda next November, because I'll be giving an update on the conference that I'll be calling from the first of the third.
Okay. So be it then.
I'll try and keep it short this time.
And I guess it's up to you again, Mr. Whitman.
No exact session, right? Well, with all due respect, would you do it, Jim?
Thank you.
Not available? All in favor?
Aye.